We do get started, I appreciate it folks, we got a lot of folks in the room tonight. Everybody will have a chance to be heard when we get to that part of the meeting. In the interim, to respect the other applicants, I'd appreciate it if we could keep the chatter down so the folks get their fair share of time, okay? All right, so I think to bring the Town of Wapungers zoning board of appeals meeting to order, roll call please be.
Mr. Delacorte?
Here.
Mr. Lorenzen?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Here. All right, first order of business tonight, acceptance of the minutes from July 25th, 2023. Have everybody a chance to review?
Yes.
Any revision changes?
I think there's one typo here about, I think we talked about earlier, co-chair name. The co-chair name, I think we used from...
For the co-chair?
The co-chair?
Yes, so we need to correct that one. Other than that, I think it's okay.
Okay. John was co-chair, right? John was co-chair.
But Shalish ran that meeting, didn't he?
We'll make that correction.
Well, the last thing was Shalish as chair, right? You chaired the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other revisions? All right, so corrections, so could I have a motion, please, to accept the minutes as corrected?
Call make a motion.
Second?
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, next order of business tonight is adjourned public hearing, appeal number 237798, area variance, 33 Middle Bush Road, seeking an area variance section 240, 37 of district regulations and an R40, I'm sorry, R20/40 zoning district where 75 feet to a county road front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 29 feet for the reconstruction of a dilapidated building structure, building structure for contractor storage, thus requesting a variance of 46 feet. Where 50 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 39 feet for the reconstruction of a dilapidated building structure for contractor storage, thus requesting a variance of 11 feet. The property is located at 33 Middle Bush Road on a total of 1.75 acres and is identified as tax grid numbers 015701396837, .87 acres, and 615701414840, .88 acres in the town of Wapungers. Could I have a motion, please, to open the adjourned public hearing?
I make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
All right.
So moved. Yes, sir, so for the record, your name, please.
Sure, I'm Troy Wojcikowski, engineer for the applicant.
Gotcha.
Since this is our second round here, I'll just give a quick synopsis of the project.
Perfect.
And I have some new information after a little bit of research after last month's meeting. So this is a project, the property is just out in the street, it's an existing block building at 33 Middle Bush, the building's been vacant for many years, so the, this project is currently before the planning board for a site plan approval. Initially, it was to renovate the building, which would have grandfathered in the front and rear yard setback issues, but since, since we were first before the planning board, we've done structural review of the building and decided that the building can't be renovated and has to be demolished and rebuilt in the same footprint. So with that, we're here for the front yard and the rear yard setback variances. Like you said, the building is proposed to be contractor storage use, pretty low impact project as far as vehicle trips, things like that. One point that Mr. Barr came up with last month at the meeting was some concern about the proximity of the first overhead door to Middle Bush Road and some concerns about trucks either their tail end being out into the street or, you know, other kind of queuing, queuing problems. So what I did was went back into some measurements and basically determined that there's 42 feet from the front edge of the first overhead door to the, to the white line, the travel, travel lane of the street. Most trucks would be probably in the vicinity of 26 feet, that's the size of say a FedEx truck, an Amazon truck, other kind of single body, straight body trucks. So I think that there's plenty of room for a truck to get in there and even if they stopped before the door, they would still be completely within the site. But one provision we added to the plan, we added a sign at the front corner, that location there, that says all vehicles must pull beyond this sign, just kind of a, a healthy reminder to delivery trucks and the like, to pull beyond that sign to make sure they're safely within the, within the parking area.
Gotcha.
These, these doors really aren't loading docks, so we foresee trucks would basically pull in, parallel with the building with their tailgate in the vicinity of the door and then materials would be moved from that point into the building, so.
Did they five bays or six bays? Six bays?
Uh, five bays, actually.
Five bays?
Yeah.
Gotcha, I see on the end there. I mean, I mean, we've, guys, we've seen this building a couple times, right? And we kind of know what's going on out there and what you have there now, right? Versus what you want to put there. If you guys have any other questions for the applicant or concerns?
I have a question.
Sure.
It's kind of related to what they, Mr. Barr was saying, Dave. The very, I don't know, the front of the building facing Middle Bush Road. Will, will truck, tractor trailer trucks somehow be able to pull up alongside there and unload?
No, that's, excuse us, grass area and there is a man door on the side of the building, which is more of an emergency entrance, is that the, the main entrances are basically on the, alongside of the building.
Okay.
So there's really no activity on the end of the building.
Thank you.
It'll be grass.
Gotcha. You have questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, the, the planning board is also reviewing the site plan, correct?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're in the process of reviewing the site plan?
Correct.
I mean, we could note that we feel that the planning board should consider traffic at that end bay during their review as a condition.
Yeah, good. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, because like you're saying, I mean, they, they really theoretically could just pull up there if they want to, and that's just a bad curve.
It's a bad curve and, you know, it's a lot of school traffic.
Yeah, make it a condition or?
Yeah, no, I think it's more of a site plan review issue than a ZVA issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody in the audience here to have any comments or questions regarding this application? Could you step right up to the mic, name and address? Sorry, I have to make you get up there.
Tinsdensen, 12 Camilli Drive, we live on the property behind. Real quick question, does town code 137 come into play with the zoning board?
In regard to what?
The zoning of the wetlands, because this is, 137 is basically saying the town of Wapungers wants to preserve, protect and conserve freshwater, wetlands and water bodies and water courses in the benefit to derive buildings going on it. And since this building is basically sitting in two wetland buffers, I'd like to know what the zoning is for that.
So the planning board is taking that up?
That's another planning board question.
It is, and this is our planner.
Okay.
So he is making sure that the wetlands are protected and that's...
Did they submit a permit yet?
I don't know if they have the, they're still in the process, they have no approvals, yeah. They will have to submit a wetland permit, absolutely, and if there's a flood plain, there'll be a flood plain permit.
Okay.
But all that will be done, the heavy lifting there will be done at the plan.
Right, the plan is all planned. Okay, because it said this is basically, if you can see it in the plans, a buffer.
Okay.
Gotcha.
And then tractor trailers are going to be addressed too, correct? Yeah, because that is in the planning board plans, is, he has, I think, a 16-year-old on his brain.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank.
What kind of storage are they going to keep in there?
I, I don't know. Do you have any? What's that, oh, I'm sorry, you have to come up to the microphone, say your name and address.
I'd like to know what kind of storage are they going to keep in there?
Your name and address, please.
Excuse me?
Your name and address.
18 Chulie Drive, Wapungers Falls, Alphonse Gargano.
Gotcha. Go ahead.
Now, I'd like to know what kind of storage you're going to keep in there, is it going to be high moving traffic all the time?
Joe, what I understand would be contractor storage, but I don't think they know specifically yet what that will be.
The only problem with that is traffic, like I'm talking about, that's a narrow road and that's already a nightmare, but they want to put that light.
Yeah, understood, again, traffic would not be the purview of this board, it will be the planning board.
Just for the public, the planning board will be holding a public hearing, it will be published on our website, it's also on our agenda, and the people that are abutting it will be notified, but it will be publicized on our website when it goes back to the planning board.
Right, yeah, there'll be a public hearing at that board as well. Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, could I have a motion then, please, to grant or deny the applicant the variances? Now, Barbara, we need to address each one separately?
Please.
Okay. All right, then, can I have a motion then, please, to grant or deny the applicant the variances? We would do one at a time. I will make a motion to grant the applicant the first variance. First variance, the benefit really cannot be achieved by any of the feasible means, will not change and make or undesirable change to the neighborhood or, or new by properties. The request is somewhat substantial, but not enough for me to deny. Would there be any adverse effects, environmental effects on the neighborhood? No, there will not be. Whether the change is self-created, yes it is, but again, not enough for me to deny. All right, then, can I have then a roll call be on the first variance?
Mr. Delacorte?
We need a second.
I'll second. A motion, a second, you have a second, and roll call.
Tom?
Tom, second.
Sorry.
Now, roll call.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lorenzen?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, in regard to the second variance, again, I make a motion to grant the second variance, the benefit cannot be achieved by any other feasible means, will not create any undesirable change to the neighborhood, the request is not substantial and the request will not have any physical adverse effects on the environment and the, again, it is self-created, but not enough for me to deny. And I also believe, you know, it's, it's time for that, that building to take a new shape and form, right? It's been hanging around for quite some time. All right, so can I have a second, please?
Before we go, I'd like to make sure we add that on this condition about...
Sure, right, we also want to condition, right, that variance, that the planning board take a good look at the first bay and how it will be loaded with tractor trailer trucks, potential tractor trailer trucks.
I'll second.
You have a second?
Second.
All right.
Yeah, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lorenzen?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Galardi?
Yes. Okay, your variance has been granted.
Great, thank you very much.
You're all set. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up on the agenda tonight is appeal, adjourned public hearing, appeal number 237799, area variance, Julius Morton, seeking an area variance section 240, 37 of district regulations and an R20 zoning district where 40 feet to the near, to the rear property line is required, the applicant can provide, excuse me, 20.5 feet for the construction of a 16-foot by 32-foot in-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 19.5 feet. The property is located at 12 Fox Hill Road on 1.00 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625701403820 in the town of Wapungers. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. In case folks are wondering, the agenda that was printed in, in purple, we had to make a correction to, but the dimensions were published correctly. Anybody here on behalf of this application? Wonderful. Please, for, for the record, your name and address, please.
Good evenings, Julius Morton, on the property owner at 12 Fox Hill Road, Wapungers Falls, New York.
Great, and for the board's benefit and anybody who might be listening in, what you need and why you need it?
We're requesting a variance of 19.5 feet for construction of in-ground pool, 18 by 36 in-ground pool. We're required to have 40 feet from the rear property line, we can provide for 20.5 feet, so thus we're requesting a variance of 19.5 feet, which has been amended and reduced from the left.
Right. Right, so we were, we were out there and took a look to see what you got going on. You know, if you guys have any specific questions, I'm just getting re-acquainted.
No, I'm, I'm good. The last time Mr. Morton was here, he changed it during, questioning during the meeting, I think, right?
That's correct, and as per, again, advisement of Mr. Barr and having discussions with my contractor and also his authority, it was decided that we would reduce the request amount by, I think, 17% what we were looking for.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Mr. Morton, I know it's been a little while since we've been out there, but the property behind your property is a conservation area?
It's owned by the town of Wapungers, it is designated as some sort of condition property, I'm not sure if it's wetlands or what the technical term is, but the town does own the property to the...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a conservation district.
I'm just trying to remember.
Gotcha. Any questions, you guys?
I don't have any.
Anybody in the audience here to comment, there's any questions on this application? Please step up to the microphone, please, name and address.
Hello, my name is Grace March and I live at 52 Philstone Loop in the town of Wapungers. I am well on the other side of that conservation land and I can attest that anybody who has homes on Fox Hill, we really never see their homes.
Gotcha.
So we bumped up into that, I've been a resident of that house for, I'm into my 40th year, but I have 40 miles here again, so, yes, I have problems with what this gentleman wants to do.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? All right, then, could I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, could I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The lot behind is, you know, a conservation zone, you can't see any neighbors, you have a very narrow backyard, the benefit can be achieved by no other means, there's no undesirable change, the request is verging on substantial, there is no adverse physical or environmental effect and the difficulty is self-created.
All right, can I have a second?
A second.
Roll call, please, be.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lorenzen?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted. You're all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just let us know when the pool party.
Next on the agenda tonight, appeal number 237791, area variance, Cesar A. Barzillo, seeking an area variance section 240, 37 of district regulations and an R20 zoning district where fences in the front yards can have a maximum height of four feet, the applicant is requesting a height of six feet along two streets, thus requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence along Roberts Road and Spook Hill Road. The property is located at 15 Spook Hill Road on 1.03 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625701003924 in the town of Wapungers. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Here's a familiar face.
Another one.
If for the record, please, state your name.
Yep, my name's Edwin Rodriguez.
Okay, for the benefit of the board and any other folks that might be listening in, what you need and why you need it?
Yep, so we're looking to have a six-foot fence along Roberts Road and also Spook Hill. There's already a portion that's already up on, along Spook. In terms of the type of fencing, it's a dog ear fence along Roberts Road and then along Spook Hill, the portion that's already done is dog ear wooden, and then the other portion that we're looking to do is open vinyl.
Open vinyl and white, white open vinyl?
Correct.
Okay. And that the existing fence is up, would remain as is?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, so we've been out there a few times and see what you, what you got going on. We did have some questions and issues raised at the last couple meetings about the cleanliness of the site, right? We understand, Barbara let us know, that it did, has been cleaned up substantially. You got a lot going on, on a very small piece of property, right? Do we understand, you need storage, you need tool of storage, we also understand that, you know, under the tarp, basically now you do have a lot of tools and those tools will then be relocated into the home once you're watertight, right? Once you're all buttoned up and you've got a roof on it, and then we able to, you know, clean up that area a little bit more, clean up maybe is not the proper word, organize.
Relocate.
Yeah, organize it a little bit better. All right, again, now, we, like I said, we've been out there quite a few times, know what's going on, you answered a lot of questions, do you guys have any more questions for the applicant?
I, I have a question.
Shoot.
The, the variance is covering Spook Hill Road and Roberts Road. As a stand, I would like to see those separated out before I make my decision and, and change.
What do you mean?
Well, the six-foot, the six-foot fence in the front, I'm not in favor of.
Right, yeah, we didn't get to that yet.
Okay. So we can have a separate.
I, I think, I mean, I, I speak, I'm speaking for myself and I think I may speak for, to some of the board as well, no way in, you know, the, the six-foot fence we're not in favor of, right? Or I in person not in favor of. I'm more personally inclined to grant the variance for the four-foot fence that you would be, you know, able to get in your front and your side. Now, I think we, we asked this question last time, but just clarify for me, the long Spook Hill and was it Roberts is the other road, there's a separation, right? A separation.
Yeah, correct, so the fencing on the front ends pretty much following the line of the structure, the house, that's there.
Right.
I think I wrote it on the, I showed you guys last time, but yes, it's not going all the way to the edge, nor is the one on Roberts.
Gotcha.
It's not, neither of them are.
Gotcha, gotcha. So I, I mean, is that something that you as the applicant would consider, is reducing the size of a fence from the six to the four?
For both?
Yes.
I mean, if it's a possibility, I mean, I guess from our, our standpoint, what's already up, we would prefer to keep that small section, a six footer, if in front only is four, I mean, that's, I mean, it's still going to be vinyl, it's still going to hold the same purpose, I think.
Right.
But the Roberts Road, I mean, I think that one, we would prefer probably a six, but we'd look, I guess, for a four-foot dog ear if, where it is, because we already have six-foot panels.
I have the map.
Go ahead.
Edwin, why don't you come up and show us on where you're going to put the fence?
The four foot's as, right, I mean, you don't do that anywhere, right?
Right, so we, we basically...
I, I mean, there's basically three sections that we're talking about, two in the front and one on the side.
I think also we are going to be going on the existing six-foot. This is the existing, that's, yeah, this is what we already have, it's already six feet, which, this is what we're, the proposed is till the end of, pretty much where the, the edge here is, is where the fence ends, so this whole strip, there's no fencing. And then wherever our point is, it's kind of actually hard to see on here, but I think it's somewhere around here is where the stake is, wherever the stake is over here, so this whole roundabout, if you will, it's not blocking the intersection of the road.
So you're, you're...
Any more here?
Uh, not till, I think it's here, because here I think is the center of the easement or whatnot.
Only have your tangents to classification. So this is the fencing.
That would be the wooden?
With fencing.
Yep.
And then...
Pretty much from here till here is the...
So from here...
And this, this is, will remain?
Correct. And this will remain open to your offenses. So with this in mind, whatever you approve, this is going to be helpful, okay? And then we'll make a copy of that for everyone with whatever decision we need to make.
Yeah, I, I mean, due to how odd the site is and the fact that they are using the one corner as their backyard essentially, I, I could see the argument for going to keep the six-foot section they have up right now.
Yeah.
But, but do we deny, do we deny the variance or?
Right now, you're on. He's now proposed wood on Robert, vinyl on Spook and shown on this map what area will be fenced. Now it's up to the board to decide whether or not you're going to grant him the six-foot to continue or deny it where he can only put four, that's what's on the table right now.
Right, gotcha. So that the, the existing six-foot fence, if we were to allow that to stay, we need a variance through that.
You could make that a condition.
Right.
Well, let's, if you grant the six-foot everywhere, that just stays.
Right.
If you should deny the six-foot in these two other areas, but want to allow that six-foot to remain, you would deny that with the condition that the existing wood fence that's, remains six-foot.
Gotcha.
So those are your options.
Okay.
But, but there's a third option, is in there, if, if we want to condition denying a piece of the second part of the variance, which is having six feet all the way around, which is what he's requesting.
He's, right, he's requesting six feet all around, you have a couple of options.
Yeah.
You could allow him to have six-foot in all three sections, what's existing and then the two he just showed you. You could grant him six-foot on one side and not on the other, you could deny everything and he'd have to take the existing six-foot down, so it's up to the board to decide at this point what you want to grant or deny.
Gotcha. Gotcha. You guys?
You just have to address all three sections. Two proposed sections and the existing section.
Okay. So, in, in doing so, in addressing, I mean, would I then, Barbara then, make a motion as to how I want to proceed?
Someone should start the motion and see how the others feel.
Okay, all right, so I'm, I'm going to make a motion then to allow the...
Wait, what, Pete? I'll close the public...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we should open it for comments, anybody wants to talk about.
Yeah. Is there anybody in the audience here that would like to comment on this application? All right, then, can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
It's so moved. Okay, I, I'm going to make a motion to allow the existing six-foot fence to remain and, and I'm going to make a motion then that the remaining fence on the front and the side yard be installed as a four-foot fence. That would be how I see this approved.
So, so four feet?
Four feet.
You're making a motion, four feet except for the existing six feet.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
I second it.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
You have a second?
I second.
Can I have a roll call, please, Pete?
Well, I would say I agree with Pete, although I would put a condition, right? I would like to see four feet in the front only, six feet on the side. I don't know how to do that.
So, right now, if, correct me, because we have to write this, right now, you're allowing the six-foot wood fence to remain.
Correct.
That's there.
Correct.
And that both Robert and Spook are built only to four-foot high.
That's correct.
I, yeah.
Four foot for any new fencing.
Right.
Six foot can stay for that one piece.
So if you think Robert should be six feet, then you should vote no on this.
Okay, that's what I'm trying, thank you.
You either agree or disagree with Pete's proposal.
Yeah, so, then, then the roll call is no. No.
Mr. Lawrence, any?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
Yes. Okay, so your variance is granted with the stipulation, right, that the six, the existing wood fence can remain six feet. The additional white vinyl fence will need to be four feet. You're all set.
And Roberts is four as well.
That's correct.
You're okay with that?
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
That was a tough one.
It was harder than it should have been.
There'll be more of the variances down the road.
All right, next up, tonight's appeal, public hearing, appeal number 237800. Area variance Christopher and Sherry Caesar, I know that may not be 100% correct, seeking an area variance, section 24037 of district regulations in an R20/40 zoning district, where 25 feet to the side left property line is required. The applicant can provide one foot for the construction of a 12-foot by 24-foot shed, thus requesting a variance of 24 feet. The property is located at 455 All Angels Hill Road on .69 acres and is identified as tax grid number 635703151049 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Motion, open the public.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Yes, sir, please, your name and address.
Hello, guys. My name is Christopher D. Sessar, 455 All Angels Hill Road, Hope Road Junction, New York.
Gotcha. For the board's benefit, anybody who might be listening in, just a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
I want a variance for the setback for the left side of my shed, which I originally at the last meeting thought it was only a foot, but you guys came out and we saw it was like three and a half feet. So that's pretty much what I'm asking for, the variance to build my shed.
So the variance we're saying is it's three and a half feet to where you have the concrete with the rebar, yeah?
So I guess asking for 21 and a half feet variance.
Correct. So, so then this, so, right, so.
Just for the record, you're proposing three and a half foot variance?
No, three and a half.
But from the property line, it's three and a half.
Correct.
And the existing pool variance we said was five feet, I think?
Yes, I think it has to be five feet minimum.
I'll look for a five or six.
So when you came in for your pool, you were granted a variance of? 19 feet. So your pool is six feet from your side.
Yeah, and as it goes down.
I realize that, but a structure has to be five feet from the property line. And that be moved in another foot and a half. They can't grant a three and a half foot variance for the.
You know, I'll move it, I'll move it over the foot and a half. That's not an issue.
You can't grant anything closer than five feet to the property line, so the most you can give him is five feet. He wanted three and a half.
For the shed, you're right. So it's going to be three and a half, so he can provide three and a half feet.
But he has to provide five.
Five, but we are, we're asking minimum.
Would you accept five?
Yeah, sure, no problem.
That will be the request.
So he can provide five, and he'll need a 21-foot variance?
It'll be twenty foot.
Twenty feet.
Twenty foot. Okay, and you can provide five feet.
Yes.
You got to modify your slab a little bit.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, so we went out there, we took a look, see what you got going on, what you got going on in surroundings, in that slab, that you're going to have to shorten up a little bit, right?
Yep, that's fine.
So, any other questions, you guys? You understand what we're doing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would just note the significant topography behind the site. You really can't see anything else.
Got it, you're pretty much screened in there. Behind you for sure, to say the very least. Anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? All right then, can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Motion, close.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Could I have a motion, please, to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion that we grant the applicant the variance. Requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in character in the neighborhood. There's no substantial detriment to be created in nearby properties. There's no other feasible method available because of the lay of the land the way your property sits. The requested area is substantial. The proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The alleged difficulty is self-created, but that's not enough to not grant it.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Delacour?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence, any?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes, your variance has been granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
All right, next up on the agenda, appeal number 237801. Area variance Frank and Carol Rossi, seeking an area variance section 24037 and 24053B4 of district regulations in an R3A zoning district, where 40 feet to the side left property line is required. The applicant can provide 35 feet for the construction of a new addition, thus requesting a variance of five feet. Where no more than 35% of the current square footage can be used, or a maximum of 1,000 square feet for an accessory apartment, the applicant, excuse me, is proposing an accessory apartment of 1,568 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 568 square feet. The apartment is 1,148 square feet on the main floor with 420 square foot loft above. Where 50 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 28 feet for the legalization of an existing above-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 22 feet. Where 50 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 32 feet for the legalization of an existing pool deck, thus requesting a variance of 18 feet. The property is located at 36 Smith Crossing Road on 4.7 acres and is identified as tax grid number 635903102389 in the town of Wappinger. Okay, that's a mouthful. Can I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, open.
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
So moved. Please, sir, your name.
Alfred Capelli, architect, representing Frank and Carol Rossi. So the project started out as a, an addition for a mother-daughter apartment. And as things happened, the size of the apartment grew, so to speak, to be beyond the maximum allowed. The existing house is being turned over to their daughter, hence the need for a, or they wanted to stay in town, so they're building onto the rear of the house. The existing two-car garage is being converted to a family room, which is being made part of the main body of the house, so we're constructing a new two-car garage. And that's the entity that's encroaching on the left side setback, as you can see illustrated, and you're all familiar with the application, it's a triangular piece of property, very, very abnormal. That coupled with the fact that originally, when the house was built, and the pool and the, and the deck was built, never sealed, many, many years ago, I just want to say that it was owned one acre, and then it's, it was changed three acre, hence the setbacks were increased. So we're here for a number of different things. Again, originally, we were here for that one little side yard setback and the increase in the, in the square footage in the mother-daughter. And, and Barbara had, had found that, whoops, we have an issue with the existing pool and the existing deck encroaching on the setback, never got sealed, sealed, so we added that, if you will, to the, to this application. So, I think we all met out there. We know that the house sits back three or four feet from the road. The addition is behind the house, so from a visual point of view, you're going to see the two-car garage and only the two-car garage, if you will, from the front of the house. And that's pretty much, that's, that's, you know, pretty much it. Can, again, going back to the, can you achieve the goals any other way? I mean, I'm not so sure we could put the garage anywhere else. Could the garage be reduced and make it an effective garage? I'm not so sure it could. We discussed the, the size of the apartment. Again, defending my clients, and I know the town limits to a certain percentage of the storage in the main body of the house, and I understand why that's done, but people want to live comfortably. They don't want to be moving into a shoebox. So as this thing, again, crept to be a little bit larger, and it's not large by any means, everybody has the floor plans here, it's a living room, dining room area, a kitchen and a bedroom and a bathroom, that's the size of the apartment, nothing more, nothing less. So, that being said.
What's the main function of the loft?
The main function of the loft is just have a study area. Right now, Carol works from home, so, and we do have a floor plan of the existing house, so with the Cape Cod consists of, enter the center hall, so to speak, dining room, front left, kitchen, back left, living room, front right, and in the back right is Carol's office.
Do you have that planned?
Yes, we do. And actually, I have little minis for you guys as well, so I'm going to bring that up, and you can take a look at it at the same time. So Carol kind of needs a place to continue working. She's not, she's not retiring yet. If you don't mind the neighbors and the, the.
Thanks.
So that's the reason for the, for the loft. The design of the, of the addition, we submitted the, the architecturals, if you will, and the existing house is a Cape Cod, so we sort of designed the, the addition with a steeply pitched roof to be in architectural compliance. And given that, you have all that volume.
Thank you.
Up there. So we have a gecko ceiling, and it was, hey, you know, do I increase the square footage on the first floor? Should be speaking. No, we really can't, but we have the air rights, so to speak, to go up a set of stairs to use above the master bedroom or the new bedroom, a space for Carol to, to do office work, which is a space she's not going to have any longer in the current house.
So the garage, the new garage also has an attic above, correct?
The garage, the new garage has, is designed the same exact way with a steep pitch roof. So yes, there's an unfinished space above there, there's a set of stairs going up there, call it the proverbial bonus room above the garage or whatever, but yes, that's not part, it's not being finished, it's not part of the apartments, it's not part of the main house at this point in time, it's just there, given the architectural character of the house.
So that'll be non-conditioned space, storage?
100%, absolutely. And the architectural plans, I think, reflect that, that we submitted for a building permit, and I think we put in your package.
I think we discussed eliminating the loft potentially. Was, is the client comfortable with that?
We, we, there may have been some discussion about reducing the size, I'm not so sure there was ever conversation at the last meeting, I could be wrong, to eliminate it completely.
We said eliminate.
I'm not so happy with that, and, and I understand the square footage, and we don't want to set a precedent. But architecturally, you know, we're not changing anything. It's going to look exactly the same with or without the loft. So you want to take the loft off, you're cutting off the square footage just to say, I'm not going to give them that many square feet above and beyond the requirement. And I'm not going to argue about, you know, maybe somebody should change the sizes of the apartments, or whatever the case might be. You know, we're dealing with the 1,000 square feet. So I think they would be unhappy if, if they didn't get the loft, or part of the loft, or.
It's a big number.
It's a big number.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's a big, the square footage is a big number, the loft is, loft is a pretty big number too, at the loft in and of itself, right? It's about 420 square feet.
Sure, but I can understand, again, the intent of the law, again, you don't want the mother-daughter apartments to overpower the main body of the house, you don't want to have a mini-house and then have a big mother-daughter attached to it. I understand that, number one. You can't see this, as you all know, from anywhere except the back and up the hill. And, and again, not to be argumentative, but, you know, we've done this show before, I have the right to put this addition on as big as I want to put it on, providing it's not a mother-daughter. So you're restricting me or the client from putting on an apartment that he wants to feel comfortable with. And again, he wants to do it legitimately, we've had the discussion about, you know, this is going to be a two-family in the future, how do we stop that, et cetera, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And we've already stipulated to the fact that if you want to make it a deed restriction or have it filed, or whatever you want to do, but this is no different than probably other mother-daughters that, that's been presented before this board, or that's been built. So.
Sure.
Did my, I did my, I did my spiel there. And again, they want to do it legitimately, I don't, you know, they don't want to sneak the kitchen in afterwards, and then when they sell it, sneak the kitchen out, that's done every day, we all know that. They want to do it the right way.
Above board, I get that.
Sure.
You guys have any other questions?
What would you want us to vote on today? I, I think there are people that would want to see the loft gone potentially, but if you want us to vote for with the loft on?
Well, we have four, we have four items here, so you're going to probably vote on each one of them individually. You have the side yard setback, we have the size of the, we have the size of the apartment, and you have the existing pool and pool deck, that need side yard variances as well.
So for the, for the accessory apartment, you would want us to vote as you've currently written it, or are you willing to request a reduction?
Well, I mean, no, I mean, usually there's, like you've done before, and we've done many times, Al, we're not going to take the full loft, how much are we going to reduce it to? You tell me, and I'll tell you whether it's acceptable or not. If you're telling me the loft is off, I mean, I'm here.
Yeah, so if the loft is off, are you willing to accept the loft off?
Probably not. But if you say, you know, reduce it reasonably, of course, you know, we're going to acquiesce. Whatever that number is, I don't know what that number is. I mean, just to, just to be, just to say I want it eliminated or reduced, I mean, there has to be a rhyme or reason to it, and there has to be a number attached to it.
Right, I mean, if you reduced it by, I mean, somebody could do the quick math, by say, 150 to 200 square feet, I don't know what on a percentage basis that would reduce your. 200 square feet, I don't know what, on a percentage basis, that would reduce your, your max.
So, just keep in mind that a month ago, you had another very similar accessory apartment where you refused to let them have the loft.
The impression is that we've taken the loft off.
I just want that on the record so that the other applicant doesn't come back, or they have the right to come back, if that's the case.
Each, each case is individual. That's why we're here. Their case may not be the same, meet the same standards or whatever that...
They may not have the same.
So, that's why you treat them individually.
All right. So, we got to move this forward when we're in on the right guys.
I mean, if you say, Al, not go up 100 square feet, 150 square feet, you know, we'll, you know, make it a matter of record, and then we'll, I'll just tell the clients, that's all you're going to get. However, I have to squeeze this down, this loft, and they're going to have to live with that square footage.
So, the loft you want is for a home office. So, what is a home office size that you would consider to be reasonable?
Well...
As the applicant?
Don't forget, this is a loft that's underneath the pitch roof here, too, guys. You know, it's not like, but...
I quite know how that stairwell, since it's going to hit the roof, but, yeah.
So, what do I have, 400 square feet?
420.
520.
What's the size of that? Is that, is that what you calculated, or is that the square footage I gave you, Barbara? I didn't think it was that big.
You gave me, hold on, let's just get this correct. It's 420 feet for the loft.
Okay, 420 square feet for the loft.
And 1148 for the first floor.
The first floor is not going to move. The first floor footprint, it is what it is. We're not taking any inches off of that. Okay? But if you say, cut the loft in half, they're not going to be happy. But, you know, we'll try to make it work.
All right. So, we cut, so we take the 420 square foot of the loft, say you cut it, let's do even numbers, right? So, say what's, again, what Dave had said, Al, a home office comfortably square foot would be what, in your professional opinion?
Like eight by 10? What dimension would you put on it?
Yeah, but you've got to work within the architecture here, guys. You can't just, you can't just say, make the loft, you know, it's over the footprint of the bedroom. Look at the plan. The living room, dining room, and kitchen is two-story. I have to come out as deep as the front of the bedroom. I can't reduce that dimension. I can reduce this dimension by just bringing the roof down, and wherever it ends, it ends. And when I go up the stairs, whatever residual space I have, that's what I have. So, again, not to be difficult or argumentative, I can't, you can't just say...
Without changing the roof, Al, you know, you could by reduce that space a little bit, by putting some walls on the inside, right? Reduce that space. You're basically footprint of the loft, right?
That's...
For simplicity's sake.
To what purpose? My architectural plans will be filed that way, and the minute that you guys leave, they're going to take that non-structural knee wall or wall out realistically, just to meet what, whatever points. We can play whatever, whatever you want to do, we can do. But, yeah.
So, from that point of view, make it first floor 1,000 square foot. So, we reduce 150. So, if we make a first floor 1,000 square feet, means 150 feet almost smaller. And same way, make the loft smaller than 150, and that makes symmetrical. So, there's no reason to have that large first floor. So, by reducing 148 foot, it will be perfect match.
Do you have a section through the loft?
Uh... We have a dormer, we have a dormer, and nearest the roof line beyond. So, I'm pumping a little dormer out and a little dormer out. The dormer on the left side with the stairwell has to stay because that's my access way to get up.
So, it seems like taking off, taking off the other dormer would basically cut it in half, no?
Um, not necessarily.
Close.
I don't think it cuts, I don't think it cuts it down.
Or at least 30%. One slope, 45 degree height.
Yeah, I mean, it cuts the usable height.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, loft will be full height.
The kitchen is only 10 feet wide, guys. My living room, dining room is only 14 by 23. That's like a dining room and a living room. So, those are large rooms. And then also, because I hear, you know, let's take some square footage away. Where am I going to take footage for there?
Are you guys in the back there? Excuse me, excuse me, you got folks in the back? Keep that down, please. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Al.
No, no, I mean, again, it's, again, and we, and again, we do this all the time with mother-daughter clients. First thing we tell them is they got to move all their, they got to sell all their furniture because they're moving from this down to a shoebox. And that's probably how this project started. And little by little, again, it has a tendency to grow, you know? So, that's, again, the master bedroom isn't anything that you guys don't live in, the size of a master bedroom, that size. It's not overly large.
That may be easy, but if they want a loft, then reduce the first floor size by 148. That way, both 148 loft also is used, and then you'll be fine. That easier to do.
It seems like no matter what we're going to agree to, it's going to require a plan change that we can review.
And what, Dave? I'm sorry.
I think we need to see a revised plan.
I'm not going to stipulate to doing a revised plan, guys. You're going to tell me tonight, you want 200 square feet, and that's what I'm going to give you, is 200 square feet. We're not coming back another month just to make me modify a loft plan to show you the reduced square footage. Not going to do it. If you want to vote it down, you vote it down. We've got three other issues on the agenda tonight, but that's ridiculous. You've just had two or three other people where you've made changes, and they're not coming back, and you're going to ask me to come back to make a reduced loft? Absolutely not. Tell me what size you want the loft, make it a matter of record, and that's it.
The fence applicant was back many times.
Well...
But here's what, here's where I'm at.
That's fine, that's fine.
Um, if you reduce, and I mean, here's where I'm at, anyway, on the square footage, if you reduce it by 200 square feet, I think I can, I can move forward. I speak for myself. But then we're going to have to vote, you know, of course, as a board, and then move on to the other variances. So, at that point, Barbara, then I just, I made a motion to move forward, right?
Yeah, just, well, first, open the public hearing, and then after that, you can just, if that's where you want, you start with the variances, but you have to do each one individual.
You mean, close the public hearing?
Well, first, is there anyone here who wants to speak on?
Is there anybody in the audience here that wants to speak on our behalf of this variance? Okay. So, now, I made a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. All right, then, now, I'm going to make a motion to, all right, we'll take it one variance at a time, right? So, the square foot variance, I'm going to make a motion to grant that variance, provided the applicant reduces the loft size by 200 square feet, or, or, Al, I'll say, maybe reduce the overall square footage by 200 square feet, whether it comes out of the loft or the first floor, or a combination of both. It doesn't really matter.
That's fair enough.
Okay, so...
I mean, if it comes out of the first floor, this is going to impact the other variances.
Say it again?
If it comes out of the first floor, this impacts the setbacks.
Oh, not necessarily.
Right? I mean, if the whole building is shrinking...
Yeah, but it's positive, right? So, that's a positive.
But that's not the corner, that's not the side of the building that I have a setback. So, it's, if I was to reduce, when I file for, for a building permit, if I wanted to reduce the depth of my first floor from 49 to 47 feet, I don't have to come back before here. I'm, I'm within my rights. I just filed for a building permit. That's it.
Okay.
The other three variants, so the first variant actually is a five-foot variance for the new addition, but I think that's the garage.
That's the garage, correct.
So, that first variance won't change if you change the size of that.
That's correct.
So, that stands alone. Then you have the variance for the apartment, whatever you choose. And then the next two have to do with the pool and deck on the other side of the house.
Correct. All right. So, we'll take them from the top, right? All right, the first variance, where 40 feet to the side of that property line is required, the applicant can provide 35 feet for the construction of a new addition, thus requesting a variance of five feet. I make a motion to approve that variance. That benefit cannot be achieved by any other feasible means, won't change or make an undesirable change to the neighborhood. The request is not substantial. The request also will not create any environmental, adverse environmental effects, and the request is self-created, however, that's not enough for me to deny. Moving on to variance number two, the square footage.
You want to finish each one?
I'll second that first one.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Have a roll call, please, B.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, so variance number one.
Before we move on to second one, I think somehow we have to say that mother-daughter will be, stays mother-daughter, not as a second apartment or something like that, right? So, in the future.
Say that again.
I didn't hear.
It is mother-daughter, we are proving.
That'll be used as a mother-daughter, not as a, an accessory apartment. Well, that's conditioned.
That's, that's the code.
That's the code, okay.
That's the code.
All right. So, second variance, where no more than 35% of the current square footage can be used for a maximum of 1,000 square feet for an accessory apartment. The applicant is proposing accessory apartment of 1,568 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 568 square feet. The apartment is 1,148 square feet on the main floor with 420 square feet on a, for loft above. I make a motion to approve that variance with the stipulation that the overall square footage or footprint needs to be reduced by 200 square feet. Now, whether that comes off, again, the loft or the total structure, I just need it to be.
1,368 square feet?
Correct. So, the overall square footage then would be 1,368 square feet. Again, whether the, a benefit could be achieved by any other feasible means, no. Does create any undesirable change to the neighborhood? No. Whether the request is substantial? Yes, it is, but not enough for me to deny. Whether this request will create any adverse environmental effects? No. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created? Yes, it is. However, again, not enough for me to deny. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, B.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Borah?
Uh, no.
And Mr. Delaporte?
Yes. Okay, that's variance number two. Variance number three, where 50 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 28 feet for the legalization of an existing above-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 22 feet. Again, I don't believe the, the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means, no undesirable change to the neighborhood. Request is substantial, again, but not enough for me to deny. Whether the request will create any adverse effects to the environment? No, it won't. And the request is, again, self-created, but again, not enough for me to deny. Can I have a second?
Second.
The roll call, please, B.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Borah?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes. Next variance, where 50 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 32 feet for the legalization of an existing pool deck, thus requesting a variance of 18 feet. Again, the benefit cannot be achieved by any other feasible means, does not create any undesirable change to the neighborhood. The request is substantial, however, not enough for me to deny. Whether the request will create any physical or, physical adverse, physical environmental effects to the neighborhood? No, will not. Whether the benefit is self-created? Yes, it is, again, but not enough to deny. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, B.
Yes. Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borah?
Yes.
Mr. Borah?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, I think that's all.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And I apologize if I was getting a little too rowdy there.
Good night, Mr. Delaporte.
Thank you for the offer. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Before we jump into the main event, let me go get a glass of water.
Here's your bag.
Yeah. All right, folks. All right, folks, we're going to continue. Have everybody have a seat, and we're going to continue. If you want to keep it down, the audience, please. All right. Next up on the agenda tonight, appeal number 22772, area variance, Alpine Commons, multifamily workforce housing, seeking an area variance, section 24037 and 24081.7 of district regulations in an SC zoning district, where a maximum of, and just to everybody's info, there's a correction...
Any other property moving forward here in the town of Wapanger. Per Kaiser versus Town of Islip, this board is allowed to consider precedent when granting or denying variances. We heard our neighbors tonight express their needs for variances on their own properties throughout the town. This board would certainly not allow for a resident to build a shed, let's say, on their property with an unknown height, size, design, location, et cetera, et cetera. You folks did your due diligence here tonight on that. Let alone would you allow someone to approve or have something that would require nearly 400% variance? You just simply wouldn't allow it. As you know, in granting variances, as you've said many times tonight, the law requires that the ZBA consider the health, safety, and welfare of the community. The applicant is creating through this process their own hardship through this process. Diamond purchased the property knowing what our zoning was. Our zoning is very clear. And Diamond solicited Dakota. Has the ZBA confirmed the net lot area for the residential portion of the property? Per the Director of Strategic Planning and Municipal Codes letter on June 5th, 9.9 acres would only yield for 29.7 dwelling units, where there are currently 144 being proposed. The density and height variance of this project is simply not consistent with most of the complexes in our town. The applicant is choosing to create a non-conforming lot based off of this. The town of Wapanger, we are the smallest geographical town in this county, and yet we are the second most densely populated town in this county with our housing ratio at 60% single-family and 40% multifamily. When I look at our neighbors in East Fishkill, they have a housing ratio of 90% single-family and 10% multifamily. The applicant also consistently refers to the Duchess County Housing Needs Assessment, which was lacking complete data from the town of Wapanger as the survey was completely voluntary. Only three complexes in the entire town were used totaling 1,261 units, when the town of Wapanger currently has 3,967 units, which does not include 182 two-family homes, 70 single-family houses with an apartment, 37 three-family houses, 11 detached row buildings with apartments, and 49 properties with multi-unit residential buildings. And let me not forget about our many mobile home parks as well in our town. This project still requires a special use permit, as I prefaced before, and further information is needed before being able to know what the full scope of the impact on our community is. Per the April 24th Town Board meeting, our Superintendent of Schools Dwight Bonk spoke to the Town Board and warned of any more future overdevelopment would result in the need for another school, as well as in addition to both junior high schools. We do not know the impact that this will have on our town's two-car ambulance service, our dedicated volunteer fire service, or even the Wapanger Patrol of the Duchess County Sheriff's Office. Per the December 13th, 2022, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the applicant stated that 90% of Dakota's capital cost will be funded by the state of New York. There are certain restrictions and covenants that come with such funding. At the same meeting, it was stated that the rent would be income-based, set by the state of New York, which would be unknown until the time construction begins, again, not guaranteeing our residents will have an opportunity to even live here. In closing, the town of Wapanger, we have our fair share of density, our fair share of traffic on our roads, and our fair share of overcrowding in our schools. The people of the town of Wapanger should not continue to have their quality of life burdened by overdevelopment. Thank you very much, folks. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Please step, please step to the microphone.
I am one of the senior citizens. I have lived here my entire life. My name is Dawn Furkins. I live at 67 All Angels Hill Road.
Hey, hold, start there, start that one more time.
This road is out of this world. I'm a county road. We have town, we have village.
I'm sorry, ma'am, put your name and address one more time.
Yes. My name is Dawn Furkins. I live at 67 All Angels Hill Road. My father built our house up there in the 50s. He worked for the airport over here. I have seen changes. I have lived here my entire life. It will increase our cost of living. Our taxes are going to continue to go up. My reassessment has went up a couple times in the last five years, which I don't intend on moving out. It's getting so that I can't afford to live here. There's a lot of old people here. I was watching, these people are coming in. What they are doing is raising our cost of living. The infrastructure will not cover their costs of our repair of our roads. I have the circle up here at the corner. I already had an accident up there. I did two weeks ago. It should have been remaining a traffic light. Route 9, if I understand this right, they are going to come off of here and they will go onto Route 9. We can't carry the traffic. I'm giving semi-tractor trailers. We never had over the last maybe 10 years. Just about every day, we got about five, six, seven trucks, and they're going back and forth. It's freight. We have the development for Gap, Amazon, and Free to Late down Fishkill. I don't want to see that up here. We're not country anymore. When the people started coming up here from New York City, they said, "It's nice up here. It's country." Not anymore. We're becoming a small city. So that's my complaint. I have nothing else more to say. It's in the hands of the government. You can't fight city hope, but I want to voice my concerns.
I'm glad you did.
I'm worried about my neighborhood. I'm on a straightaway. People know my road. I call it a racetrack. That's what it is. We are zoned for 40 mile an hour. We get everything through there. And how nobody's gotten killed. I only had one neighbor, one year, the post office decided all the mailboxes had to be on one side. He got killed going across to his side of the road, and that's where I live. He came across, car hit him. Thank you for your hearing.
Thank you for your comments. Next. Who's there? Anybody else? Step right up to the microphone.
Hi. My name is Nick Clark. I live at 33 Sussex Place. I'm here, and I'm happy to see so many of our neighbors showed up also. We are the closest border to this proposed project and probably going to be the most affected. I know this gentleman mentioned there's no sightlines from there. I haven't seen a topographic map. I find that hard to believe. I did notice that interested me at the end of every session with a, with a participant here, you asked a series of questions about how it affected things. Generally, your answers were, "No, it doesn't affect anything." I think a lot of the answers in this case would be, "Yes, it does," and that needs to be taken into consideration. You know, sightlines, noise, environmental changes. I know that's not your purview right now. That's the planning board, all that. My concern here is precedent. If this is approved, they're going to lean on precedent to build more projects like this with height restrictions removed, density restrictions changed. And I know that in some of the filings that they've offered here, they cite Imperial Gardens. It's a project built in 1960 in the village of Wapengers, not even in the town, but they cite that as a six-story building and want to be able to build five stories here. Once we open the door, that's a problem. I mean, I don't mind a variance for some density increase, but this is very extreme. It's like saying I've got a five-acre property, four acres of it is a pond. Can I build 30 units on that one acre? It doesn't make sense. So thank you for your consideration. Thanks for your time.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please step up to the mic. Again, name and address.
Good evening. My name is Grace Martin. I live at 52 Fieldstone Loop in the village of Wapengers. I'm before you to give you some ideas of why I believe that this project can be achieved by other means. It will have an adverse effect on our environment. It's self-inflicted hardship, and it is undesirable to, for the neighborhood. So I oppose this project. I stood in front of the Town Board last year with many reasons of why the project would not be good when they showed their village in the village. Right after that meeting was over, Diamond and Dakota did withdraw their application. Okay? But I'll here to talk to you about what you can do as the Zoning Board. For starters, the Director of Planning and Strategic Business in our, in our town basically says it's only 9.9 acres where Dakota, Diamond is still saying it's more. So per Barbara Roberti's report, which you all got, and I read it, it's quite intense, it's 30 units allowed. They're asking for, so the numbers are off even in their variance. I believe this will be a wrong precedent. When I stood in front of the other board, they're trying to change then the town code. It was two and a half stories versus three. Had a long discussion to understand that. The difference now, they want three and a half stories, which is really four. Two and a half stories is the slope of the roof. It's the same height, but it's the slope of the roof according to the town lawyer. So they have not changed their request when they have come to you. Other participants in front of the Zoning Board who come to you, you do some sort of negotiation. What I've seen from a year ago to now, there is really been no negotiation. They have not, the other thing you've asked some of your clients that stand in front of you is there, is what do you need and how do you need it? And could you make some amenities to reduce it? They have not given you any amenities. As far as substantial, it is substantial. It's 30 versus, 144 versus 30. So you're setting the wrong precedent. They're talking about 10 acres. The property is 40 acres. So this could come to you three more times, which means we'll have a mini co-op city in Wapinger Falls. So it is undesirable to the neighbors. I'll talk about safety concerns. We only have two ambulances for the town of Wapengers. We also only have two deputy sheriffs. I myself had the unfortunate-ness to, well, let me back up. I pay taxes to the town of Wapinger. Town of Wapinger's residents get free ambulance services if they have a medical emergency that happens in the town of Wapinger and you're a Wapinger resident. I had a medical emergency in this building last October. By God's grace, I am fine. The ambulance that came to pick me up wasn't the one right across the street. So therefore, my tax dollars did no good. I had to pay for the ambulance, which again is okay because I'm, I'm fine. And last, so again, it can be achieved by others' means. As far as safety and concerns, we're going to be overcrowded. Safety officers right now are deployed, again, we only have two deputies, to deploy instead of taking care of our schools right now, they're watching our parks. Our parks have had lots of graffiti. So again, once the deputies start, stop watching our parks, they'll go back to the schools. So again, we will have more issues. You heard Mr. Cavasini say the schools are overcrowded by what our own Director of the Schools has said. By the way, our taxes, or 75% of my taxes goes for the school system. So you don't have to take long to do the math. If we're overcrowded, we'll build more schools, more school buses, more teachers. So again, I basically believe as I started with this, it can be achieved by other means. They can do it two and a half stories, which gives them three stories versus four. It is an adverse effect to the environment. It is a self-inflicted hardship. They have not come to do any kind of negotiation with you, and it's clearly undesirable in our neighborhood. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Just, can I ask, get one question, just to clarify a couple issues. Do you have a site plan that shows the area that you're proposing to use for the residential portion, which I think is like around 11 acres now? Can you just outline, because I, I think what you have up here is, is the nine acres, and you guys added a little chunk for the additional parking. It's come up in a couple comments.
I could be wrong. I could be remembering incorrectly. I think it's in number seven. That's your density calculation?
So my recollection was that to, so that we weren't looking at the parking variance anymore, you, you were basically adding a portion of the parking lot to your site, which is part of what the area discrepancy is? So the, the parking shown in their site plan i- is not the full extent of the parking that's being said to be given over to the residential uses?
That's the, the map up there is, is the area, the most recent area that they have submitted for their density calculations?
This is actually a civil drawing, but I'll just leave it separate.
Okay, so you're saying this gray area, so you're counting a, a portion of the common road, correct?
That's correct.
And that, that square portion at the bottom, which in older iterations was a hotel, is now counted as a portion of the residential, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then just one other question for the record. The submission that we have indicates three stories and 50 feet.
That's correct. Three stories.
Not three and a half.
That's correct. Three stories.
Yeah, and it's 42 to 49, just depending on finished grade of each.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Go ahead, sir. Just put your name and address, please.
My name is Peter Hennett. I, address is 12 Gold Road in Wapinger Falls. Okay, I looked at this proposal, and if you approve this appeal, you're setting a very bad precedent for the town of Wapengers. They're not asking for a few things. There, there's 93 dwelling units approved for that area. They want 54, 51 more. That's more than 50%. I mean, that's a lot, and that, and we shouldn't be putting all this increase on stuff that we already have. I mean, we're, we're, we're at a limit in what we have. And I just want to say that if you approve it, you're setting a very bad precedent for the town of Wapengers, because in the future, any developer can come in, get a piece of land, and put up whatever he wants, and, oh, it's okay. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Leverie, and I'm here to represent my father's property on 207 Old Topol Road. And we both are against this project, and I want to second everything that Joey had to say about all of his concerns, the overcrowding, the strain on our resources, the strain on the environment. My father's properties border this. I have some safety concerns and want to know how they're going to maintain their property and keep a border. I would like to see fencing put up at bare minimum as a buffer zone between our properties. And I really don't think that, you know, the site itself, it's a zoned commercial, mixed-use, yes, but I believe some retail should probably go in there before housing. I'm pretty sure the town itself has other locations that would be preferable for housing. And even other towns in the vicinity have, like he said, less demographic strains than we do. So those are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Debbie Arroyo, and I'm at 13 Sussex Place. And this proposed project butts up against the properties, as this gentleman noted, and I have some concerns. And some of those concerns are, number one, when asking for the variance, the developer said that this, the property size as is granted by the zoning is not financially feasible. They're getting monies to build this project. Now, I don't think any of you would buy a property and build a house beyond your means. So I think they need to reconsider that. The other thing that I want to say is that they will continue to receive monies for this housing as long as the tenants are income-eligible. So this will continue year after year, year after year, their money in their pocket. Okay? The other thing that I have a concern about is the fact that there is 750 lineal feet between the prospective properties and Sussex Place. They talk about the topography, the topography and vegetation. Well, let me tell you, in the winter, when all the vegetation is bare, they're going to be able to see into my living quarters because there's nothing there. The second thing I want to say is, as someone else also mentioned, that it is putting a strain on the police, ambulance, power grid, increasing taxes. And because of that, I think you should say that this is, grant a positive decree on this project and deny it. I don't think it's feasible. I don't think any one of them would want a property of this size, 750 feet from their property. None of you. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Collins, 49, Losy Road. Our property shares the aquifer that's under the Alpine Project. We're sharing it with BJ's and the other building right now. So there is no existing town water supporting any of the buildings currently at Alpine. So the idea of a project taking 30,800 gallons of water per day in addition to what BJ's and the other building use is just grotesque. There is no possi, there's no possibility, it must be connected to the United Wapengers Water District. And the good news is that the applicant fully agrees with that. I'd like to read just a couple of items, a couple of their answers to the, your full environmental assessment form that they submitted last November. Will the proposed action use or create a new demand for water? Yes. Will the proposed action obtain water from an existing public water supply? Answer, yes. And the name would be the United Wapengers Water District. Is expansion of the district needed? Answer, yes. Is a new water supply district or service area proposed to be formed to serve the project? Yes. The sponsor being Diamond. Now, the date of the, this is, this is nine months ago, last November. The proposed, the date the application is submitted or anticipated, the answer, discussions ongoing with the United Wapengers Water District. Now, there's two other things that are basically saying, if this doesn't happen, what are you going to do? Describe plans to provide water supply. If a public water supply will not be used, what are you going to do? And if so, what is the maximum pumping capacity? That's left blank. That's fine, meaning there is no Plan B. They are fully in agreement that the Alpine Commons has to be connected to the United Wapengers Water District. So one question, I think, maybe, I, I hope, I'm really hopeful that the answer to the question about application submitted, blah, 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 that nine months of ongoing discussions has led to an agreement between the applicant and the water district. Please say that has happened.
Here, me too.
Has, has, has it happened? Is there an agreement between the applicant and the water district to supply town water to the Alpine Commons?
Not presently. Yeah, not presently.
This is nine months of ongoing discussion. Not yet.
Understood.
You can make a baby in nine months. Given, given that, I would strongly urge the board to leave the environmental assessment form open until there is an answer to that. And until there's an answer to that, I strongly urge that the environmental assessment form have an indication of the severe impact of not having that will be on our shared aquifer. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come up? Please, your, your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Glorios. So I live. My name is Jim Glorios. I live on Losy Road, 50 Losy Road. Lifelong resident of Wapengers Falls. Grew up in, right on Spook Hill, actually. So it's my first meeting here. I'm going to lose myself a bit, but I just, I noticed one of the biggest things that you all care about is precedent. And I wasn't going to talk to this about till a little bit later on, but watching some of the things that happened tonight and some of the questions you asked and the details that you were looking from for the people that came up here to try to get those projects completed, I, I appreciate that, because that's really what is important. I toured this country in my retail profession, in my law enforcement profession, and seen a lot of areas, well over 1,000 small communities. And I can tell the difference when I walk into a community on if there was due diligence done on the projects that had happened and how it impacted the community after, because I talk to the people and I listen, and I'm dealing with the issues that I was listening to from, from my perspective. So what blew my mind tonight was at the lack of information on this project that we have to put this even to a vote. Now, I can tell you that my property starts low, goes high. I'm, I'm on a well also right across from, from that. And so I actually didn't think about how being, having a small hobby farm, how that was going to impact my water for all the fruit trees that I planted and, you know, other things I wanted to grow, the big garden that I put in and everything. So, but a topographic map was one of the other things I was interested in, because my back part of the property, which is up on top by Bel Air, I can pretty much see the top part of BJ's already. And BJ's is going to sit lower than what this project's going to sit. In fact, this project is going to sit on the highest point of that property. So it's not just me that's going to be looking at the top part of these buildings. It's going to be everybody above me, all the way probably up to maybe even All Angels. Now, the projects that they, they do, I don't know what kind of research that you looked at them, but they're like block cell-style buildings, big squares, you know? And I've been in communities that have allowed these projects to go in with very little detail around the presentation of what that building looks like. And that's important, because a company can come forward to you with a presentation of some buildings that have some arches and maybe some porches on the front, something that's aesthetically pleasing, right? But through the projects that I looked with this company online, and I looked at all their projects from here, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Virginia, or West Virginia, Rhode Island, they're just blocks. And I don't want to look at blocks all over the place, you know? And, and not only that, there's only 144 house unit project. They don't even say how big that property is, and that's four-story buildings. So, so the presentation here just lacks way too many facts for us to even make a decision on what to do, because the precedent is- Because the precedent is the most important thing here. And you said it with that gentleman, with the loft that he was trying to put in, right? And we're just talking about a 200 to 400 square foot loft. But, it was really important for you all to have the specific details so that you knew the project that you were approving was in line with the precedent that you have done in the past. So, when you look at this going in the future and we just go ahead and approve something like this, all the other projects coming down the pike on Old Hope Road, they're going to be able to do the same thing. Because they're going to say, you know what? You did it for Dakota. And we don't even know what this looks like, right? We don't know what the footprint is, where it is, how high it is, you know, what colors it is. So, that is one thing I want to talk about. Second thing I want to talk about, and I'm sorry, is a little bit longer, is police and fire and our services. I can tell you firsthand, with firsthand knowledge, this will impact police, fire, and ambulance. And I can tell you this because I was a deputy for the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office who worked part-time for seven years doing the Town of Wapinger Patrol. And that is not a two-deputy patrol. What it is, is it's a part-time car, usually one car at a time, and it's not all the time. And I can tell you, when I worked those four to 12 shifts, it was balls to the walls all night. I mean, I was non-stop. It was non-stop. And I was part-time, so I had to get off at 12, hoping I was going to get off at 12, but I had to stay another hour or two because I had to do my paperwork, right? Just to get done. And it's like apartment complex, apartment complex, apartment complex, apartment complex. Now, that doesn't even take into account what's going on around the area. Because you all know that if East Fishkill or Beacon or Town of Poughkeepsie Village, Wapinger needs backup on a situation, we're rolling, right? So your one Wapinger car must be approved by the sergeant, is rolling out of there to go help back up another situation. So you now, when you're putting in a complex like this, that can now set a precedence for bigger complexes like that, all your, all the information you have for what you need is out the window. Because now you have to start debating on, do you need a full-time Town of Wapinger Patrol? Or do you need a Town of Wapinger Police Department? Because Fishkill has their own police department, Poughkeepsie does, Village of Wapingers Falls does, right? Village of Fishkill. So, why, we're like the only town that doesn't. So now, is that, does that need to happen? You know, same thing with the ambulance. Every day, I hear sirens all day long from my house. It's non-stop. Whether it's the ambulance service, whether it's Houstonville. And Houstonville, okay, they're dealing with a shortage of members, right? They're actively, very actively trying to recruit, okay? They're on their Facebook, basically saying, look how busy we are. And this is before this complex even goes in, and all the other stuff down the road, right? And that's a volunteer service. So, I can tell you from living upstate and dealing with rural county volunteer fire departments, they get overworked to the point where people don't go show up for calls. The kids stop going because they don't want to just keep on going to call all day long. And so, you're going to put a strain on this department to where they're going to need more equipment, they're going to somehow try to figure out more people to work there when, right now, volunteer fire departments across the country are dealing with issues with not being able to recruit people. Okay? And then, it deals with mutual aid. So you're not just talking about us, then now it's New Hackensack is going to be overworked, and the call increases on this is now going to have to pull, I'm sorry, Houston will be overworked, now they're going to have to pull New Hackensack more, right? So the residents over there are going to feel the impact. What I'm trying to say, I'm going to close this up, is that there has to be very detailed plans coming to this board for this to be even thought about. Like, the guy that just wanted to put a 200 square foot or 400 square foot office space above his, it's just not acceptable to me and for it. And I know you all have a very hard job. I've made hard decisions in my life, too. I appreciate it, and everybody else here appreciates. We're not here just to bust your hump. We're here because we all grew up here, and we don't want this to turn into like a suburb of New York City, or New Jersey. Like, these New Jersey housing, they're like, these counties have turned into just like massive housing projects. Because it's everybody from New York City that now during COVID figured out, they can move out, work from home, and travel into the city when they want to. And that's what would happen here if we just started allowing to overbuild the whole town. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate your thought into this, and I hope that you do the due diligence that you need, and they give us the information that we expect for you to make an informed decision.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Barbara D. Filippo, 56 Lane Gate Road, Wapingers Falls. I've been a resident here for about 30 years, raised my children and everything, and I'm very happy living here. And I can't see changes going on like this. I mean, we got all the old people here, they can afford, how could they afford all these new taxes coming in with the schools and everything? Our schools can't handle this. There'll be more crime, there'll be more accidents, you have people on, you know, on call for, like they say, ambulance and police, you're going to have to do something with the roads. When I first moved up here, there was two lanes, two lanes on Route 9. That was it, you know? And you just can't let this happen. All these years, how do you think Wapingers came to be? We've been paying our taxes all these years. The taxes are not cheap. I'm sure that everybody agrees with me here. I mean, this is totally absurd. You know, we want to be happy, we're elderly, we can't handle this, you know? We just can't handle it. It's just too much. You know, I've had a lot of my own medical conditions where, you know, I just can't handle it anymore. You know, if I'm left by myself or something, what am I going to do? You know? Where am I going to go? You're not going to afford anything, you know? I mean, you're going to have more accidents on Route 9, you think there's accidents now? People are getting killed on Route 9. They're getting killed. I mean, totally, every time you turn around, there's a cross, there's flowers on the side of the road, you know? Nobody seems to understand that there's really too much overcrowding, you know? Where are you going to put all these kids in the schools? Could we actually afford to put in new schools?
No.
New buses?
No.
They want buses all the time, new buses, new buses. How do we fit that into the budget? You're going to lose all these residents that you had. I mean, I don't know how many more years we have, but, you know, the other people that follow us, they're going to get older, too. And they're going to be paying heavy taxes, and they're going to, you know, we don't want this to turn out to like the city of Poughkeepsie. You know, a lot of crime and stuff, you know what I mean? Wapingers was a special place where we've all come to live, you know? And we love it. And why ruin, why ruin our neighborhoods? You know, paying the taxes, what the hell for? You know? We appreciate our town, we appreciate where we live, and the peacefulness and the, you know, no crime. But you bring a crime into the area here by bringing more people in, it's going to be so crowded. You won't even be able to get in and out of where BJ's is. It's bad enough now as it is. What kind of traffic lights you got up there? We're always fixing our roads on Route 9. You ever look around? Route 9 is being fixed, there's another road being fixed here and there. And that's all property maintenance, we're paying all the taxes and everything, you know? And what kind of roads you're going to build in there and lights? You're going to have a cop on the corner, you know? On each corner there? You don't even have enough ambulances, like they say, two ambulances? Come on! We built a big hospital, Bassel Hospital now, and we only got two ambulances? That's it? Otherwise, we got to depend on, and, you know, our taxes, we're supposed to pay for that, and otherwise, we got to depend on private ambulances, which we're already even covered for, you know? Think about the elderly people that have been paying the taxes for all these years, and have a heart for us, okay? Because this is what we need. We all came here tonight to spend hours, we got here about 6:30, 6:30 this evening. And we all came here to spend our evening, we want to let you know that this is what we want. We want it. We pay your tax, we pay our taxes because you want our, you know, you want our money, you need our money to run the town. I understand that, you'll get it. But when you turn people down, you're going to, you know, you want to make the people move out? Or what do you want to do? Give us a heart attack over this? You know? I mean, we have our problems as it is, medical problems.
Understood.
Please, I mean, really think about it. You can't, you can't make this like New York City with the migrants. You can't do that, okay? Because that's what I feel it's, what's going on right now. Really. I'm sorry to say I'm very aggravated and everything, but, you know, this is, people have to express themselves, this is how we feel, you know? And something's got to be done.
Understood.
We do pay high taxes, more than anybody around, you know? And we want, we want something from our taxes, really. We want to be heard, we want to be appreciated. You know, all these years, you've been collecting, you know, we've been helping the schools, pay the taxes, this and that, our children have grown up now, we've got grandchildren and everything, but this has, it has to stop at a limit, you know? You can't just throw us in the garbage, you can't throw us aside.
Understood. I appreciate your comment. Before you speak, I'm going to ask folks again, just try to keep it to the three-minute rule, you're going to get away from that a little bit.
My name's Jonathan Matthews, 2 Twin Oaks Lane, in Wapengers. And I will be brief. Just to reiterate, this open-ended scheme calls for 144 new apartments on a roughly 10-acre plot of land. That's a 388% variance. I call it a scheme because there is no defined plan. Not that we've seen, anyway. We all know that a plan requires specifics. I don't know anybody who goes around writing blank checks and signing them in hopes the recipient will be reasonable in writing the dollar amount in. And I don't know anybody who would enter into a contract based on loose conceptual ideas, maybe, hopefully, I'll let you know later, not sure. That seems to be where we're at right now, though. And that's why it would be premature for this board to give their authoritative stamp of approval on this measure at this time. At the very least, what we need to see are independent studies pertaining to the following, not developer-provided and paid-for studies, but independent studies. What effect will the 144 new units have on traffic patterns, and what are the associated costs? What will the environmental impact be to the noise, air quality, and water runoff into the surrounding protected wetlands? What will the increased cost of policing, fire, and other services be? And how will the increase affect our schools and increase our taxes? I know the team here mentioned that school enrollment is declining. I asked, is there anyone in this room who thinks the Wapingers Central School District budget is going to go down next year?
No.
Or the following year? Of course it's not. Does anybody think when we have 144 new units being filled, that the taxes are going to jump dramatically? Of course, of course. So, I urge you to table this measure due to the frankly embarrassing lack of specifics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been dying to get up here. But I wrote it down so I wouldn't take up too much of your time. I'm his wife. I'm Kelly.
Say your name and address, please.
I'm Kelly K. Matthews. I live at 2 Twin Oaks Lane, off of Losi Road here in Wapingers Falls. We've lived here for 25 years. I'm a mother of four children, three are recent Royce Ketchum graduates. My daughter just graduated Royce Ketchum, and she's at Cornell University. We waited outside that high school for an hour for that graduation. That's how underpopulated we are. I am calling on this Wapinger zoning appeals board to reject the request for the variance. Very little is known at this point about how Dakota Diamond will take advantage of this variance, and we're sure they will. What is clear is that their project will likely evolve in ways that forever will change the character of this community. For example, school taxes and overcrowding. Building 144 new apartments on this plot of land requires a 388% variance. How much will our school taxes increase as a result of this project? Our district is already at the tipping point of needing a new junior high school. Taxpayers, taxpayers, me, not Dakota Diamond, not these people, you know, patting their little pockets, will bear the burden of this decision for decades to come. How about my children and grandchildren will bear the consequences of your crap? Traffic congestion. Increasingly, the density of housing in Dutchess County will only lead to more crowded roads, more traffic lights, and more pollution. Just this summer, the Northeast experienced unusually high levels of air contaminants due to fires outside of our region. Fortunately, Dutchess residents did not face anywhere near the same levels of smog that occurred downstate. This is why we live here. So why will we dramatically increase the population density at this time? My children and grandchildren will not pay while they pad their pockets. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Hi, Patrick Carroll, Myers Corners Road, 223 Myers Corners Road. Hey, I'll be real brief, I just want you guys, and you heard a lot of very valid points, passionate, just think long and hard about the students in the Wapingers Central School District. My wife's a teacher there. At the end of the school year last year, when they made up classes, she had a certain, she had a number, all right? And this year now, they just added five more to that class. So her class size grew over the summer by five. It's going to happen, right? You know, there's ebbs and flows, so that's really kind of normal. But I didn't see any numbers for the projected number of kids that are going to hit the district. So if it's already out there, forgive me, I missed it. But be mindful of the overcrowdedness, you heard a lot about the school problem. And lastly, if you put another red light on Route 9, it's like death by a thousand cuts. I don't know, I mean, you guys have been here, you've seen it all, right? So just, everybody hates driving up Route 9 in Wapingers. Be mindful of that.
Thank you.
Charles Rowe, 38 Degarmo Hills Road. This is working?
Yeah, did you get that beat?
So, I'm not even going to repeat everybody's point. I will say that I'm from Florida, I've worked with these type of developers, I've watched what happened to communities, I've been on your shoes, on your side down there, I've been a volunteer, I got pushed out as a volunteer because we had to hire, everybody had to go paid because you couldn't support all the calls. I mean, five years ago, my wife died in my arms, I had to work her for four minutes. I'm a half mile from the fire company. I had to work her for four minutes because I couldn't get anybody there. Five hours before the coroner showed up. So, we're hurting. And it doesn't give a damn what these people are going to come in with, because they're not going to come in with anybody that's going to help you. If they're coming in with what I think they're coming in with, this is a plan you don't want in this community. I've seen them ruin other communities, I've worked all over the world, one of the board members up here knows I have, he'll vouch for it. You don't want to see this happen. I've seen this happen in too many communities. I moved here, it was a very nice place, and in 15 years, I've seen it go down the tubes. I'm looking to move out. Now you're going to have somebody else pay taxes here because it's not the same community, it's not what I moved here for. And I don't think any of these people want to see the same thing happen. And I don't think you want to see it happen either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robyn Lucary, I live at 15 Red Hawk Hollow Road. We've heard a lot of good reasons as far as why these variants shouldn't be granted. I just wanted to ask one question, I don't know if I can get an answer to this. I think it's important also whether, they describe themselves as workforce housing. This is the Dutchess County Housing Needs Assessment for March 2022, I'm sure you've all read this. There's such a need for housing for seniors and for single people within Dutchess County. So, my question besides all this is, they are saying they're workforce housing, what makes them that? Do they even fit a need? Does this mean that they're going to give us four apartments at a reduced rate? Do they fit the need of what we actually have in this community? That's my question. I don't know if anybody can answer that. What makes them workforce housing?
There's a certain criteria that qualifies workforce housing, I don't know the particulars, you're going to want to get into the weeds, so to speak, but there is definition of workforce housing.
Okay.
I'm sure you can find it somewhere.
Okay, nobody here... Okay, nobody knows.
In our town code.
Okay. Well, I think that, I don't know if they have, have presented that particular case that they are workforce housing. I'd like to hear more about that. What, what does that mean to them? What are they going to provide? Okay?
So I guess the question, there are definitions of workforce housing. I guess the better question is, is there a percentage number for what percentage of this project, what percentage of the units are definitely more 4,000?
100%.
Okay.
I have to look up the definition? You can't slide it or?
Hold on.
So, I mean, the, 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 New York State, um, New York State has a definition.
I know this gal, she's been wanting to get up for a while here.
Hi, my name is Sally Williams, and I'm at 1 Briar Lane, Wapentures Falls. My husband brought us up here about maybe 37 years ago. He was a Marine. When I moved up to Wapentures, I said the first thing. I feel like I died and went to heaven. I love my neighbors. We were the only minority family on the, in our, on our building, rather than my home. The people welcomed us so much. My daughters had a great education because of the school environment at Ketchum. My oldest daughter went to Fairfield University on a partial scholarship, and she's a senior accountant for Deloitte. My other daughter went to American University in Washington, and she's a consultant for a major company in New York City. It's because of the education, they weren't overcrowded. They had the attention to get the right education, and that's why they did well. If I didn't care about this town, I'd say, well, these people, my kids are already grown. They got everything. I care about the ca, town and everything that these people have said here tonight. I feel that I'm not even educated about this project because I just heard about it three days ago. And I'm exhausted. I have to go to work tomorrow morning at 6 o'clock in New York City. Don't kid yourself. This project is going to change our town. It's not going to be for the better. You can barely get into Vassar Hospital without waiting six and seven hours in the emergency room. People are going to die. Schools are going to be overcrowded. We're not going to be educated. And you know what? The next thing we're going to hear about is how our schools are shot up. This has got to be a big decision for everybody, but this will change our town. And my first thing when I told my daughter I was coming here tonight, she says, if things don't work out, let's sell the house and I'll move you to Connecticut. I don't want to leave my home. I love Wapentures. You really have to think long and hard about the longevity of this plan and the future of the people and the people who built this town. That's all I'm saying. Take a good look and really think about it. It's not all about money. And I work in the city for workforce development, and I know what's going to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Dobbins. I live at 6 Shule Drive in Wapenter. I just want to address a few questions about Route 9 and the traffic that it's going to create. There's only one in, way to go in and out of that complex. There are lights. People are going to get frustrated just driving down Myers Corners from round, on right now, on Route 9, onto Myers Corners. Two people cut me off from making a left-hand turn because there's two lanes in there, and they jump lanes. What's going to happen when the southbound people from Route 9 go into that complex and realize there's, they can jump ahead of the people that are waiting patiently? Because most people around here who've been living here for 45 to 50 years, as I have, wait patiently and take their turn. Outsiders, new people, don't do that. We all know that. Northbound, onto Myers Corners Road? Everybody knows how horrible that is. And so eventually, these people who are new here will learn how to cross over and cut over to Route 376. Every town road will be impacted by this change. There's a light at Myers Corners School, at Ketchum School. There's going to be impact. But they, so don't say it's not going to impact us because it is. Also, what's going to happen when there's the 30 more acres? I was shocked to hear that tonight. I learned a lot tonight. There are 30 more acres that they can then come in here for more variances and say, we want to put more houses in? Look at how successful we were. Asking for a variance for a three-story building? Don't tell me seniors are going to do a walk-up of three stories. That's totally absurd. All of these apartments that are coming in, and some of them are going to be low income, are we going to start opening the doors to New York City where the mayor can't help send out the people that are coming in across the borders and across the migrant, as migrants? We will be an open door for more people to come in and share what you want to give away. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up.
Lori Lear, 7 Lormar Court, Wapentures. I just want to say, please don't do this. Please don't do this. You're wrong if you do.
Thank you, by the way. Anybody else in the audience?
I've got one in the back.
Oh, may I have somebody in the back? I'm going to make you say your name again, though.
My name is Debbie Arroyo, and I live at 13 Sussich Place here in Wapentures. So I'm a transplant from New York City. And I grew up around workforce housing. And I can tell you that there's a small percentage of people who receive assistance, housing assistance, that really care about their neighborhood. Oftentimes, because they have no investment in it, they don't care what they do. So this company has to make allowances for all the repairs and all the problems that that element brings to this community. And that will impact us. So I'm considering that although it's a great idea to provide housing for low income, it's going to affect the quality of life here. And I'm not for it.
Thank you. Again, your name, please.
Yeah, I forgot. Grace Martin, 52, Phil Stone Loop, Wapentures Falls. There are two other properties in this town that have the potential of doing this. There are three plazas zoned the same way. Alpine Commons, Degarmo Hills, and Hannafords. So again, the precedent you may or may not set will also impact other neighbors at another point in time. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Jim, at this point, to do, we're done hearing comments from the public for tonight. I think at this point, I, you know, we need to, obviously, we all made notes on all your comments, very valid. And we take them seriously, you know? And we are going to have to, you know, be with our consultants and, and discuss this. So I, I think, go ahead.
The one question is-
Go ahead.
Rather than have the applicant-
I think it would be appropriate for the applicant to make a submission responding to some of the comments if it chooses to do so. You know, with, I mean, you know, the issues, the common issues that were brought up with expecta, fire service, ambulance service, which I don't think there's been submissions on those areas before.
Okay.
Police. There's some submissions regarding school district projections for enrollment, but I don't know. And I thought at one point there was some communication from the district itself. But I looked quickly in the record and I don't see it. So, you know, rather than, and then I guess the issue regarding workforce housing versus low-income housing, if you want to address those issues as well. I think it would be, you know, to give the applicant an opportunity to prepare a submission and, and put that back. I think it would be helpful.
Sure.
And if the board, you know, wishes anything else, you know?
Yeah, right. Well, I think for, as, as far as next steps, right?
Right.
I mean, we would adjourn the public hearing-
Sure.
For the, for the next meeting. And then I, I think that we do that first and then-
And I think it would also be appropriate for anybody in the public who's not available to come tonight, to give them an opportunity to submit something in writing.
Sure.
So I guess just to help us out, based on the comments, if the board members have anything specific that you would like us to supplement our prior application materials with, you know, we would like those comments from you.
Well, I, I think Jim mentioned, right? I mean, there's obviously an overwhelming concern about emergency services and the police department and, and impacts that the development may have on those services. Definitely need, I think, more information on that.
I mean, I think we have traffic study. I don't know if the, is the accidents in the traffic study?
I'll have to double-check. I can, I can see usually.
Usually is, I'm just-
Yeah.
We, we have a, the town has a consultant traffic engineer.
Yeah. Yeah. So Jim, as far as this evening goes, then tonight, we'd adjourn the public hearing-
Certainly, yep.
For, for, to the next zoning board meeting, or should we go to?
I would put it out in a month, right? To give the applicant an app, I mean, it's been, I don't think it's-
So be, what, what would that be?
Okay. So it's first meeting in October?
Yeah. October 10th? Okay. All right, so I'm going then to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the October 10th meeting. Have a second?
Second, Ed.
On paper?
Aye.
So moved. So we're going to do that, and we'll see you folks again on the 10th. And again, the, the public hearing will be open again at that point as well. These folks know that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for us?
Jim, anything additional you want to tell the applicants this evening?
Well, I mean, just for the public, there's been some questions regarding the level of detail of the plan submitted. The action of the zoning board is only for the granting of the variances. And there's some question as far as the level of detail. But once, if the zoning board votes, the project is still subject to a special permit by the planning board and still subject to site plan approval by the planning board, should a variance be granted? I mean, the, the issue is that this application could not be, could not proceed through the planning board because what is requested is not permitted currently under zoning. So that's basically what, so, you know, if the ZBA should grant a variance, that does not mean that the project is approved. The special permit is still required, as would a site plan. So that would be necessarily included as a condition of, you know, any, any approval granted by the ZBA, assuming it was granted. I just, you know, and that's one of the reasons why the level of detail here is not what you would see in a planning board application.
Right. And that's more of an FYI.
Right.
Okay. Well said, so we'll see you guys on the 10th? 10th?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I guess one que, to the question regarding if you might have some theoretical elevations or, you know, one of the, one of the issues that was-
Yeah.
One of the things that was submitted, one of the questions he's raised is color of the buildings, you know, things like that. I know we have some visuals that were done, but if you've got any kind of, you know? I think there's some in there.
One of, one of the submissions that's available on the website-
Surrounding neighborhoods, not just sites.
Well, so, so one of the, one of the elements of the submission was a visual impact, and it uses cross-sections. So it's going to be the location of, you know, five surrounding locations and the location of the building with the topographic relief in between so that you can see exactly what you're talking about.
It's not acceptable. It's not acceptable. Because it's all my property, and they will be able to see into our living quarters in the winter when there's no trees and looking to have it. It's not acceptable.
A question for the applicant, actually. The, the information that we-
Here's me.
Yep. The information we've seen today, do you consider this to be a theoretical plan? Or the plans we've seen, the sections we've seen, that is what you're looking to build, correct? Yeah, this is what we're looking to build. We can pull the plans up, but I think we've been pretty detailed and specific in exactly what we're looking for. Okay. Both in our written narrative and on the site plan. So the intent is not to get the variance and then revisit the design in its entirety? What's that? Your intent is not to get a variance and revisit, redesign, and change everything, right? No, no. And practically, that wouldn't make sense because that could lead to changes that would require further relief from the ZBA. So what we're proposing is what we're seeking approvals for.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Can't hear you. Come on up.
Got to come up.
Sorry about that, I can't hear you.
Go on, Perry, live at 39 Sussich Place.
Did you get that?
Go on, Perry, 39 Sussich Place. This gentleman said, you said that just because the variance, if the variance gets passed here, they still have to go to the plan, the board, the planning board. Doesn't that just open the window, though, to make it easier? Once the variance is approved and it gets passed, even though it still has to go to the planning board and, and all the other, you know, steps, this is where it's going to stop the elevation of, you know, the, the, the increase of everything.
Right.
If the variance gets passed, it's still going to, there, there's still the accessibility to get around everything else that they want to do. That's all I got to say, right? Isn't that true?
Well, this, this would be the first step of a field.
Right. So if they can get this passed, then, yeah, they still have to go through all the other things. Oh, maybe it won't, maybe it will, maybe, we don't know. But this is where we have to fight so we don't want it to get passed because, like what everybody was saying, my house, my property, comes right around to the corner of where this building is going to be. And like Debbie said, it's closer to me, and it's right there.
Gotcha.
So this is why me and my husband are here tonight. So by what he, this gentleman just said tonight, it has to stop here. It can't get past the variance request.
So- I, I guess one, one question. If the applicant would agree, what was the address of the person who was complaining, who was questioning whether or not there be visibility?
Oh, everybody on Sussich Place. Everybody on Sussich Place. Because it cuts right up all of our-
I guess individuals, if you can check, if we've got cuts to various properties, properties on Sussich Place? Maybe some typical-
It comes, it comes right to our back.
No, I, I know, we've got, I, I know that.
Yeah.
So if we could have maybe a couple of sample cuts for visuals to Sussich Place?
One other thing, I am a bus driver for Wapentures, and it's tough. It's tough now. I mean, especially through COVID and the last couple of years, it's tough, you know, to get to, nationwide. But if you add, you're going to add, and it's going to be tougher. So that's all I got to say.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll just say it, just for anybody who wants to see these documents, they're all on our website. I don't know if everybody realizes that, but everything that they've submitted, you can peruse in your own home, just so that you're aware of that.
Yeah, so if you go, if you go to the town of Wapenter website for the agendas for the zoning board of appeals, all the documents submitted are in a PDF form, you can click on the link. So, oh, and I guess the one, one other question regarding workforce housing, if you've got any kind of-
I presented that to you.
Okay, okay. So-
All right, gang. So we'll see you guys on the 10th. We've adjourned the public hearing already.
Yep.
So do we need to do executive session tonight?
Gentlemen.
Everyone's here. I don't know how often we have Malcolm.
I'm kind of spent, to be honest with you.
You had a rough go, Pete.
I've got a long day tomorrow. Is it possible that we could do that another time?
Do it in a meeting in September.
We do that, too, right? Or if we wanted to do it sometime before, can we, or no?
Right, in another, let's go.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so I don't think we're going to do executive session tonight. So all that being said, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. On favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Who seconded? Who seconded? Tom, do you know who seconded?